Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. This is the Community Town Hall Meeting with me, Richard Siegel. I am the City Council Representative for Ward Five and also Douglasville's Mayor Pro Tem. This is my third Town Hall in three years, so I'm happy you could all be here. Tonight, we're going to talk about SPOLOST. We're going to talk about some of the plans we've been working on here in the city of Douglasville, and we're going to talk about tax allocation districts from an educational, informational standpoint, not advocacy. And then we'll have Q and A period. All right? So in November of 2016, the citizens of Douglas County approved a special purpose local option sales tax here, which increased our sales tax from 6% to 7% starting April 1st of 2017. The city's portion of that SPOLOST was divided into these categories: 45% for transportation and public works, 20% for public safety, 20% parks and recreation, 15% for city facilities. Our city engineer, AECOM, has taken the responsibility for transportation and some of the city facilities, so we're going to hear about that first. And I'll bring up Steve Teterman from AECOM.
Thank you, councilman. We have a budget of about $4.6 million in resurfacing projects, and we have one contract that is underway right now, and I'll talk about that in a minute. We also have Douglas Boulevard, which is the section of south of I-20, and it includes beautification, potentially taking out the Center Fifth Lane or Center Turn Lane near the mall, putting in raised islands, things like that, just making the Douglas Boulevard area nicer, also resurfacing that area as well. And then also the I-20 at Fairburn Road Gateway Interchange. That's the interchange for the interstate. And as you know from being out there, it's pretty bad. There's a lot of erosion. There's not a good grass stand out there, and so we're working on doing a beautification project out there. And so we currently have one SPOLOST contract underway, and I think that they should be through with this in November. And there are 58 streets. It was a budget of $3.2 million. Jackson Paving has that, and they're well underway on that. And then we have two other contracts that we have a low bidder, and we're in the process of getting the contractor underway, and he should be underway on these within the next couple of weeks. And so the first contract is Riverbanks, which is entirely within the Riverbank subdivision. And then there's also four streets that are in an L-MEG contract, which is state funding. We also have, it's not up here, but we have another contract that I'm putting together now, and it's approximately 27 streets throughout the city and a budget of roughly $1 million, and we should get that under contract here pretty, or get it advertising here pretty soon. Then there's the Douglas Boulevard that I was speaking of. Concept design is actually in progress at this time. And that's the five lane with the two-way left turn lane that we're considering taking out and making a raised median there, landscape median. And then, as you can see, as everybody knows already, a lot of erosion, not much in the way of good-looking plants out there. Then we also have some additional projects that are on the list for potentially doing if we have the money. And Fairburn Road at the 92 is the one that we just talked about, but there are three other interchanges that are also, we're trying to go forward, but we didn't have enough money for those in the budget for all of those. So we're going to go ahead and go forward with the 92 at I-20. I'm kind of jumping around here, kind of at the bottom, there's three of them: Thornton Road, Chapel Hill, and Bill Arp Road. But then also, there are two other projects that when the State Route 92 underpass at the railroad is opened, there will be the section of Fairburn Road south of the railroad, south of Banquette Highway, and then Dallas Highway north of there. And we're going to look at doing landscaping projects or beautification projects, gateways, things of that nature, because the state of Georgia will eventually abandon those to the city, and we would like to make that a gateway of some sort to the city. So I think those will be some very interesting projects. There's also the Church Street Streetscape that would be encompassing the entire length of Church Street there. We're currently on hold on that partly because we're waiting to see what firms up with the new amphitheater and what kind of the flavor we want for the entire city to be down in that area. Community Center Parking Lot, as you know, there's only four spaces out here, and they're all handicapped, so y'all had to walk a long ways. We're going to start, we've actually gotten a contractor, under contract, and I'm going to meet with him either the end of this week or first of next week and get started on doing a 42-space parking lot that'll go back out in that direction. And so you'll be able to park right out here and come right into the community center, and it should be through within 90 days. So that's all the transportation.
If anybody has any questions on this, please step to the microphone, and we'll answer them. Tell us your name, and then proceed with your question.
My name's Dennis Fox, and I just wanted to let you know to update your slides is that the Riverbanks has been paved and is done, and they did the painting today. It was an excellent job. The crews there were very cordial, very nice, so I want to reiterate that positive part of it. The only question I have is the communication to us as far as what streets are going to be done and when. There was a real breakdown there. And so for a future reference, when we only have one entrance into our community, it created some, a little bit of a challenge there. So if they could just say, "We're doing these streets on these desks, these streets on this day," that would help a great deal.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Great feedback. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll go on to the status of the projects that we're working on here in the city. We've got a lot of projects that we're working on all at once. Some of them are in the planning stages, some are in the implementation stages. I'm not going to go through the whole list, but there's a lot going on, and we're going to focus on one of them right now, and that's the Downtown Master Plan. And we're going to have Patrice Williams, who is our Director of Community Development, walk us through that.
I'm never going to remember that. Okay. Good evening. I'm Patrice Williams, the Community Development Director for the city of Douglasville, newly appointed. This is a new role for me. Really excited to be here for my first Town Hall meeting. We're going to quickly go over the Downtown Master Plan. This is an endeavor between the city, the Downtown Development Authority, along with the County Development Authority. We started this process back in 2016 now. We started a meeting late spring of 2017, and the plan was adopted back in December of 2017. So we issued RFP, we looked at several consultants, the DDA did, and we selected the top three. The City Council, along with the mayor, they interviewed those consultants, and they selected TSW. And then we had what we called a kickoff meeting, where we just had our constituents representing all five wards along with staff. We did not include the consulting firm, because we wanted to have an honest conversation with them, with the participants, letting them know that this is our budget, this is what it looks like, and let's be realistic as far as what we're dreaming about. And so it was a six-month process, and again, it was adopted last winter. So this is what the Downtown Master Plan, the focus area, looks like. As you can see, we crossed over on 92 up to Dallas Highway. We pick up Strickland Street as well, that's part of our downtown. We go down to the CAC, and we pick up that residential area there. And of course, you got Rose Avenue Club over to 92. So it's not a huge area. We just wanted to make sure the area that we did select, we could actually focus in and accomplish things, and I think we are on the road to doing that. So these are some of the renderings we received from TSW as a result of the process. We do have four phases. So at the bottom, there's a red light here, I'm sure. Okay, I better stop hitting buttons. So, yeah, probably not. The bottom-right photo is what we consider to be Phase One, which is the old jail site. And we have that pretty Douglasville sign that everyone really likes, but it's just a rendering. That's not necessarily what it's going to look like, so let's just put that out there. But it is Phase One. And the old jail site, I'm not sure if you're really familiar with downtown Douglasville, but it's on Church Street. It's about eight acres, eight-plus acres of land. The county owned the jail site. The city purchased it a few months ago, and so that was a big project that we have to thank mayor and council for making that decision to purchase that property. And so we will eventually demo that property. We're doing environmentals right now. We're also in the process, again, talking to TSW as far as what Phase One will look like at the amphitheater. So you'll be hearing from your council representative regarding these future meetings that we will be having to discuss what we want this project to look like. And the top photo is Phase Three. So that's close to, that's exactly where City Hall currently is. You have the conference center, but there you can see we're looking at adding streetscapes, where it's more pedestrian-friendly. We'll have bicyclists in the downtown, and so, but that's Phase Three. That is for years to come. So the town green, that's the amphitheater again. We will probably have our first meeting, I would say, probably in late October. Again, it's going to be six meetings where we're engaging the community, so you'll hear from us. We want to hear from you. We will not take up the entire eight acres with the amphitheater green space. We want to include mixed-use development as well, so as you can see from those renderings, we are considering commercial, retail, civic buildings, residential as well. So with that, we do have a consultant coming in, and they'll be getting more into the redevelopment powers, but we are hoping to accomplish this by invoking redevelopment powers for our downtown through the TAD, which will be on the ballot in November. But she will cover this later.
Thank you very much. So we've got a lot going on. We're trying to figure out how to pay for it. Some of it is being done with SPOLOST. I already mentioned that. And you know, the county also has several SPOLOST programs, one of which is a recreation facility that they want to put at Boundary Waters. And they're having a meeting Thursday of this week from 6:00 to 8:00 at Boundary Waters to get citizen input on what to do with that. They asked me to share that, so if you want to make your way over there and give your input on that, they would appreciate it. In addition, all the other SPOLOST projects that we have going on, you can look at them on the city's website, which is douglasvillga.gov. And at the top of the page, there'll be a link to SPOLOST projects. Go there, and you'll see some of this information and more. You could also look at the Downtown Master Plan study, as well some of the other plans we have going on, on the city's website as well. As far as when the citizen input meetings are going to be coming up for that Phase One of the downtown plan that Ms. Williams mentioned, follow the city's Facebook page, check frequently on the city's website, or follow my Facebook page, which is Richard Siegel, Douglasville City Council Member, very original. Go to richardsiegel.com, it'll redirect you there. I post a lot of information about what's going on in, I'm stalling, and it looks like it's perfect timing, about what's going on in our city of Douglasville, events, meeting agendas, meeting videos, so... Sarah, you want to come on up? Before we go on to the next segment, are there any questions so far on what we've talked about? If so, come on up to the microphone. No? Okay, well, that makes it easy. Sarah Ray, President of the Douglas County Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight, and thank you, Richard, Mayor Pro Tem, for inviting us to be here tonight. I'm the President of the Douglas County Chamber, and we have, we are in business to support and permit businesses in the community. So we do that through many different things, whether it's programs, events, outreach events, leadership development programs. And we also are the voice of business for Douglas County. So when it was made aware to us through our Government Affairs Committee, which looks at a legislative agenda and policies that are affecting not only us on a local, state, and federal level. So when we were told that the city was going to put the, or was making the recommendation to put the Redevelopment Powers referendum on the November ballot, we, I went to our Chamber Board of Directors through our Government Affairs Committee, and we basically decided that this was something that we saw value in. The redevelopment power referendum is something, it's a wonderful toolkit or wonderful piece to be able to implement all of these wonderful things that you have seen in the presentation earlier with the Downtown Master Plan. So we went to our board and just found that we think it's very important to make citizens aware of what a TAD is and what a redevelopment powers, you know, what redevelopment powers referendum entails. So we actually hired a consultant who is on her way here right now, I apologize that she's running a little behind, to orchestrate an educational information piece and educate citizens in the city of Douglasville on the positive effects that a tax allocation district can entail. So I would let her get into the nitty-gritty of what the redevelopment powers referendum is, but I would say in layman's terms, and Marsha and Patrice can correct me if I'm wrong, basically what it does is it, when you vote, it gives the city of Douglasville, you give them your power to allocate where your taxes go. So that way, they can decide, you know, you give them the power, and then there is a map. Do we have the map tonight? It's okay if not. So within the redevelopment powers referendum, there is, it is paired with a tax allocation district. So basically, any citizens in the city of Douglasville, the city has their power. They are authorizing the city to have the power to allocate their taxes to a certain area of Douglasville and use that to redevelop an area. So the tax allocation district that we have, or that the city has developed and presented, which I'm sure that they can email out to everyone, and I know I've got it as well, it has to be a connecting piece. So it basically starts at, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, it starts basically where the old racetrack is at, correct? I-20, and then it goes north on what is now Highway 92, but we'll soon, you know, Fairburn Road, and then goes, I guess that's east on Broad Street, and then a little bit west. It encompasses the old mill site, and then goes all through downtown, and then even goes north of the tracks to include part of the New Horizons Initiative. And I think it goes, is it Upshaw? Is that the street? I'm sorry. Okay. So basically, it gives all of the authority to the city, or, you know, it gives them the power to allocate those taxes. It's not increasing taxes. It's nothing that you're going to have an increase on, you know, when you pay for things, but it gives them the authority to allocate those taxes to the area for redevelopment. So wonderful things like that town green that you saw, or the gateway signage, any, you know, streetway findings, streets, all of those kind of things would be included in that referendum. So I think that's a Cliff's Notes version. Did I miss anything, Marsha?
No. Do you guys need to speak?
Yes. I think Marsha has something to add. Sorry. This was a little on the fly, so...
All right. No, so just to add to what Ms. Ray has mentioned, if the city of Douglasville is granted redevelopment powers, that actually allows the city to help to incentivize private development. As the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, a lot of the development that we are mentioning, those are all your dollars. Those are all public dollars, whether they're through your property taxes, your sales taxes. Those are all the investment that we are allowed to put in. As you know, we can't do everything. So in order for the city to help to grow in a positive way, we need to help to attract some private development. And those redevelopment powers allow the city council to do that in specific areas, particularly in areas that need a little bit of help, areas that may have not grown like other parts of the city have, particularly in the downtown area and on the north end of town. So those are areas that many folks look at and say, "Wow, I wish you can do X," or "I wish you can do this." We can do things like street resurfacing, beautifying areas that were mentioned earlier, but it's very hard to attract private dollars when the city, or I should say, when private development doesn't see the incentive from a tax perspective, nor do they see the local government putting their first foot forward. So we're doing that. Your elected officials, the mayor, Pro Tem, on a regular basis, along with Councilman Watts, who's here, are always trying to make strategic decisions based on those plans of where to purposely invest. Part of the reason why we have started all of these plans is really to do that in a more strategic way. So for instance, the downtown. They all involve, all of the plans that we're doing all involve a public process. We want to make certain that any project that we've done involves you all, to make certain that there's buy-in. So when we do the amphitheater, we want to make certain that the constituents have bought into this. This is a project. This is something that they're interested in doing, as well as understanding the financial ramifications of a project such as this. So anything that we do moving forward, since I've been city manager, we have done our best to make certain that we're being very transparent and open, and really doing the work of the constituents that they request and that they're interested in. So I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding any project, any that are not listed, things that we have going on. The mayor, Pro Tem, is correct, we are very, very busy, probably the busiest I've seen us. I will say that you have a group of elected officials who are working very hard for public interest, and we have a lot of public interest projects going on, and really a lot of private interests. We just want to make certain that that private interest goes in the right place and really strategically where you want it. Questions?
If you have other questions, Nicole with Nickelworks Consulting will be here in a few minutes and able to answer those. If you have interest in learning more about the redevelopment powers referendum, there is going to be a booth at September Saturdays, which is this Saturday, the 22nd, and the 29th, from 11:00 to 5:00. So she'll have some even more detailed information about the benefits of a tax allocation district. So thank you, guys, again. I just forgot to add that, so...
As long as we're talking about the November election, let me give you a rundown of what you're going to see on your ballot, and you'll see why it's important to go all the way down to the very bottom of the ballot. Just don't stop it, Governor. There are 10 statewide races on your ballot. Learn all the candidates, decide who to vote for. Then there's also your state legislature, senator and representative, they're on the ballot, they're unopposed. You also vote for Congress. Then there's some county races, and there's also seven ballot questions statewide. Five are constitutional amendments, two are referendum, and then there's one county question and two city questions. So a total of 10 questions that are seeking your yes or no vote on the ballot, and those are at the very bottom, so that's why you need to go all the way down to the bottom. The county question is for the brunch bill. The city questions are the redevelopment powers that we mentioned and the brunch bill. So there's two different brunch bill questions. One would be related to restaurants in the city. One is related to restaurants in unincorporated Douglas County. What the brunch bill would do would change the time that restaurants can start serving alcohol beverages on Sunday. Currently, they can't start till 12:30. If these ballot questions pass, then they can start at, from 12:30 to 11:00, so 90 minutes earlier. So look into that, decide how you want to vote on those. And then the redevelopment powers for the city of Douglasville, county does not have that question on their ballot. For our friends in the city of Villarica, they also have redevelopment powers question and a brunch bill question. And if they're on the Carroll County side of Villarica, they'll have a T-SPOLOST as well. So that's what your ballot looks like. Be sure, if you're not registered at your current address, to take care of that by October 9th. Early voting starts October 15th, and the election day is Tuesday, November 6th, I believe. So the other change we made this year, as it relates to city voters, is you no longer have two different voting locations for the county election as you do for city elections. They're going to be at the same place, your usual county place is where you'll vote for both elections. So for Ward Five, which I represent, if you live in the village, you already had both voting at Factory Schultz Middle School. If you live in the Riverbanks, or Sweetwater subdivision, or the rest of Ward Five, you're going to be voting in the same place. Most of that is at Lithia Springs High School. There's still a little bit of Ward Five that votes at Colonial Hills, and that might be it. I have to go back and check the map again. So while we're waiting for the chamber's consultant to show up, we will open the floor for any questions on any topic. Just step to the microphone, that's all we ask. And I'm sure our city communications team who's recording this will be able to edit out long pauses, right? Mr. Fox, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Dennis Fox, and I heard signs coming up saying no buses as I was driving down my street. And so I haven't heard anything else, although I have not deliberately looked for information. Can you give me some insight on that bus project?
Yeah, the county is implementing a bus program. The routes that they have selected partially will be in the city of Douglasville. The buses that they're talking about are 15 passengers, which includes the driver and two spaces for wheelchairs, so it's really just 12 seats. And they've got the approval for that, and they're going forward with it. Currently, they're stages applying for the funding from the Federal Transit Authority. They've already checked all the boxes up to that point that would allow that to happen, so they do expect to receive that funding for the operation of the routes. They already have the buses, and they're also spending money to market it, to let people know about it. One of the routes will be on Riverside Parkway, going from the Red Cross area up to the Park and Ride on Thornton Road. Any other questions? All right. Want to talk about anything else? Greg, you got anything?
I'm good.
You're good? Patrice? Well, while we were waiting, there's some cupcakes in the back there. Welcome to have. There's delicious strawberry, delicious key lime. There's even napkins and plates.
I have Patrice. I'm a loud talker, so I don't...
You need to have the mic so that it ends up on the video.
The Douglasville Boulevard, I thought there was some discussion at one time about potentially having a bike lane. I know we've got a sidewalk, but a lot of folks that ride bikes don't ride on a sidewalk because people walking on a sidewalk get upset, so...
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't think that we will have, we're just in the concept stage right now. In fact, we have our first concept meeting tomorrow with the city staff to talk about what we're proposing. And so it may be that we do bike lanes, but we're really not leaning that direction. It may be that we do a multi-use path, and so we're not really sure yet. But we do want to do something that ties into everything in a larger scope, and so that's a good question, though, and I'll keep you updated on that.
I just know there's been a lot of talk about connectivity, you know, parks in different areas of the city, and so just maybe...
Our city communications department runs an excellent YouTube channel. This is going to be on their channel. They also run live streams of the programming that goes on the city TV channel, and you can find it on there as well, special events on there. City council meetings aren't on there because they're on a different website. You can go to douglasville.legistar.com to see all the city council meetings, videos, as well as agendas and maybe minutes. They are there, okay. I'll stop pacing. Anyone else? Come on up.
This is an easy one. This is just a question that, when you were showing the transportation. Can you take me through the thought process of putting, taking the turn lane on Douglas Boulevard and changing it over to what I would call a berm in the middle? What's the thought process?
Absolutely. If you go on Douglas Boulevard in front of the mall, you know, between the entrance by Rooms to Go and the entrance to Olive Garden, that whole way, there are no driveways. So there's no need for a center turn lane because you can't turn anyway because there's no driveways. So instead, beautifying it.
It is in a way, but the question I have with it is, is it necessary to do it?
It's beautification, because that area does not look that attractive. You have the freeway on one side, and you have a mall on the other, so we're trying to make it look better. I'm lobbying for hydrangeas. I don't know if I'm going to win that battle.
No, I was thinking, because I doubt seriously that there is anything ever going to be built on the far side of the mall. Am I correct?
The frontage along the interstate?
The frontage along the interstate.
Between the interstate and the road.
Right.
Right.
But a lot of it is probably all...
No, but it is, a lot of it is privately owned, not the city or the state.
Oh, okay. Because I just can't see a reason, I mean, I know we have a certain amount of money for that, and I know it does, may not look nice, but I can see where, what is the need for spending money to create the berm, when it, I don't see a problem with maybe just widening the lanes. I'm, I just, it's a question, you know, why do we need it? There's probably a reason for it, I just don't know what it is.
The reason is beautification.
Okay. How much is that going to cost?
1.8 million.
The overwhelming majority of that 1.8 million, though, is the resurfacing of Douglas Boulevard, which has not been done since about 1991.
I have no problem with resurfacing Douglas Boulevard. I think that's great, but I just was concerned about the need for that extra berm. But, go ahead.
No, and I'll just add to that, when you look at malls across the metro, when you look at malls across the metro Atlanta area, you don't see malls that have that much surface street in front of them. It's a competitive business, so the mall essentially came to us looking for opportunities for them to increase their improvement. It goes back to what I said, sometimes, private dollars, well, not sometimes, private dollars follow public dollars. So they're not willing to invest and make the improvements in the mall without seeing that the city is actually going to make some improvements in the area as well. So when we talk about bike lanes, when we talk about improving, getting rid of so much of the concrete, but putting some shrubberies, putting things that look, that basically make the area look beautified. When you go to Cumberland Mall, you don't see a whole huge area of surface parking, or even at Town Center, or, all of those are community improvement districts. We currently don't have that, we don't have the tax base to do that. So this is the city's way of, through a SPOLOST program, and not through the general fund dollars, to actually do something to help to incentivize the development, and really, the, spending the money at the mall. I mean, we won't, don't want the mall to kind of go down just with a sea of surface area parking. We do want it to be attractive and inviting for people to visit.
I agree with that, I really do, but I'm trying to think if there's not, like, adding a bike lane in there for, on Douglas Boulevard, re-beautifying that front area, that's, you know, where the trees are, and the sidewalk area in there, spending the money to do some of that.
Part of the issue is, we don't own the property. We can only, we can only beautify what we control, and that would increase that 1.8 million dollars to significantly more if we were to have to try to ac- to acquire that property.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Recession? Oh, she's here? Well, then come on up.
She's right here.
I'm staring at you, so... Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Nicole Hall with Nickelworks Consulting. I know Sarah said she stood up and told you a little bit about what my team, Nickelworks, has been hired to do with the vote yes for the Douglasville TAD. I'd like to say that she explained a little bit about what TAD is, Tax Allocation District, and we're excited. Our firm has worked with different community development, economic development tools, and if you're not familiar with it, I think she told you that we will be out on, at the September Saturdays, you can look for our booth. We'll be able to go into more detail, but it is a tool for redevelopment, and we want to be able to explain that to you, so that you can take that back and explain that to others in your community. The other thing that I think is very important, and obviously, they have been speaking about it from the city officials, is that with the strategic plan, this is implementation, if you look at the TAD, as, from Pillar Two, okay? So, I actually brought the Pillar Two, which was Invest with Intention. And so if you were at the unveiling, and you understand that, I think it will be, it's an easy sell to understand how this is the next step into actually having the redevelopment and the economic development, taking it to another level. So, with that being the case, I don't know if you have any questions that, I know you were asking questions when I walked in, but we will be having materials at our table on Saturday, the 22nd, as well as the 29th, and we encourage you to come over, so that we can share with you exactly what you, what a TAD will be able to do for the City of Douglasville, as it has done for other communities across the metro area. So with that, any questions before I hand it back over? But we look forward to working with you and bringing this economic development tool.
Thank you. If you'd like to read up more on the actual legislation that was passed to put this on the ballot in the City of Douglasville, you can go to House Bill 1030. I personally went to the, the State Capitol, met with our legislators and legislative council to make sure that got introduced in time for this session, because it was getting towards the end, and that was quite an experience. So if you go to the state legislature's website at legis.ga.gov, and do a search on HB 1030, you can read the text. The ballot language is defined right there in the legislation, so we don't have any wiggle room on what's actually on the ballot. That was defined by the legislation. So if there are no other questions, we can go ahead and bring this to a close. Thank you to everybody who came out. Make sure to watch the video on the city's YouTube channel, so you can say, "Hey, there I am." And we'll do this again next year. Thank you very much.